...high school, it's a pleasure for me to be here tonight. We are in the midst of our board meeting, kind of our board meeting meets in our gallery, which will be immediately after our back admission portion of our meeting. We're fortunate enough to have a lot of students and staff members to recognize tonight, and so we're thankful that we're having our back admission portion in every area big enough. And we do have several of our board members that are here just so that I can bring you to the fact that we are in a board meeting, Jim is our board president, Mike Mundt is our board vice president, and then we have board members Jim Walz and Catherine Campbell are here, and so we will be going after this in our board meeting in the gallery in the area of our meeting. But, our first back admission winner is actually the back admission of our 2016 Teacher of the Year, the board representative of the Teacher of the Year. It's my pleasure to introduce, he introduced her, which is more, of the board Assistant Superintendent, Mayor Warren Milligan.
What happens is teachers nominate their fellow teachers if they are quality teachers, if they wanted to recognize them for Teacher of the Year. And then, once we get our nine candidates, and that's how many there were this year, the teachers actually vote on the Teacher of the Year. So, if I could have Patsy Thompson up here, she is our 2016 Teacher of the Year. She is a special ed teacher at Warren, and she's been teaching here for 23 years. And the staff members wrote something, and I'm just gonna read parts of things that they wrote about her, because she's a pretty special person. "Patsy Thompson is a beacon of light in the sometimes dark and daunting world of special ed. If you saw Patsy in action, you know she is passionate. Her love and enthusiasm for teaching students with special needs is awe inspiring. If you saw Patsy in action, you would know she is an innovator. She is constantly coming up with new and invigorating ideas, and she actively seeks out collaboration with other teachers. If you saw Patsy in action, you know she is the ultimate team player. If you saw Patsy in action, you know she has a calling in life, and that calling is teaching. Patsy doesn't work for awards or accolades, in fact, she doesn't even like this part of it. She works to influence and inspire others. There is no doubt that she has impacted the lives of her students, but also the many coworkers she works with. For giving advice on how to handle difficult students, how to implement accommodations, or how to just make it through the end of a tough day, Patsy always knows just the right thing to say. So I want to congratulate her, and I just want to thank her for all the things she has done for our students and staff here at Warren, who are very fortunate to have."
Right, please, any of the gentlemen, we realize today they are all gentlemen, ladies from this group, but there are any of the students that were part of Mr. Staccar's project in the Centennial logo, if you could please come forward? As many of you know, our next school year is our 100th year at Warren. We're really excited about that. It's a wonderful opportunity for us to celebrate all the past, and present, and future at Warren. And part of that was, we've been meeting now for a few months to try to kick off our campaign to make sure that, starting with this summer through the graduation of 2017, we highlight every opportunity we can to celebrate our school history. Part of that was us trying to find our initial logo, because we're ready to start sending things out to the community regarding our 100th year. And we wanted to make sure that we had the logo that everybody would familiarize themselves with. So, Dr. Walz, who's the department chair for Fine Arts and Keith Stocker, who are our visual arts teachers, invited some students to participate in what will be a contest. Mr. Malber, the associate principal, I know playing help out breaking with this, and we actually had five students who, if will, participated, had entries, and helped develop our envelope and our logo. The interesting thing is, Matt's pictures a little bit larger, because his was actually the one at the end of the day that we're using in a lot of different formats, but we also have some other versions that the other gentlemen contributed to, that will be rolled out over time, that may be more useful on some other events. But, we wanted to take the opportunity to take this, thank this group of fine young men from their work, and if you could flip. This is, this is the logo that was designed on Warren. The reason that the committee, that's still a lot of time, actually, if you had to pick out logos and try to think about what's the right message. The reason that we picked this logo, the committee, with a lot of different versions of colors, because they come in all kinds of colors, if you will. It's only because, obviously, we wanted to make sure people understood that the W, right, is symbolic of the history of Warren, and people see that W when they look at the logo they think of, and we wanted to make sure that the huts are jumped out, so they knew it wasn't just anything about Warren, it was the 100 years of history that we've been celebrating. So, if you'd please help me right now, our fine young men, Matt Daniel, Cameron Parchek, Bartos Hamlin, Jeff Peterson, Elijah Coleman, let's give them a round of applause. So, this is their extremely valuable prize. They were the thousand people to get what our Warren put in celebrating our 100. So these got the recognition in our group and our board, we're the first ones to actually get these buttons, and it might be where I'm not sure whether they would share this information out. We also promised we would buy their lunch. So that's what we got from the hours and hours of volunteerism and hard work to put forth, the number of envelopes and logos you're gonna see over the next four months. A round of applause. I think that's Mr. Post to come up. The next group of activities that we have, a number of people are here tonight because they're connected to our sports activities, sporting activities this season, and I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Post.
Thank you, John. What a great winter we had, started about mid-January, is when things really got heated up, and then all of a sudden, our teams and individual athletes and performers stepped it up a notch, lasted until mid-February. Just to give you an idea, we weren't local, we were traveling all over the place, from middle of January to the middle of February, I put about 1,800 miles on my car, watching our kids perform in many different events. So I'm very excited tonight to recognize our student athletes, student performers, and an outstanding winter that they have. I believe the first one we're starting with, Coleman, correct? Girls' bowling, like to introduce our head coach, Casey Lang.
Casey Lang, and this is my assistant coach, Lucy Johnson. Don't have a little lot, see if we can kind of as long live as we can. We started out, had a pretty good season, went nine and two over the course of the actual season. We ended up finishing, taking the conference final, MSC Conference Tournament, both at the JV and the varsity level. And then, we went through the state tournament series, ended up finishing fourth in regional, fourth in sectional, and finished 12th in the state. So, that was kind of a big accomplishment for these days. I'm gonna call up right now, and it's gonna be a big one. Oh, look at that. All right. She's not here, but Victoria Beazov, she's in a band concert right now. Also not here, Haley Greers, and she's not here. Thank you, Mark. Sol Marie McGee. Kail Hollis. Kail Rossi. Benny Orton. That's all we got. You want me to do it now? Okay, we'll do it now. All right, also, you got it there. Kail Rossi also finished individually as 16th in the state, which might have stopped us from sort of...
At this time, I'd like to introduce Assistant Marks, the cheerleading coach, Anna Vantala.
Actually, do have some notes, I'm not that good at cheerleading. Okay, we had a fantastic season. Our Rossport competition was in the top 10, we placed first at a whole overall competition, and then in sectionals, we placed third. That was the highest our program has ever placed in sectionals, so that was a huge achievement. This allowed us to qualify, this allowed us to qualify for the IHSA State Finals. This is the first time in four years, and the third time ever in our program's history. So, again, huge accomplishment. None of our members on the team had ever been to state before, so this was an awesome experience for them, and we placed 21st. Definitely left them hungry again for next year. So, we don't have everyone here today, but, oh, okay. Okay, so, you're yours. Tina Bernardini, Amanda Byer, Tina Captain, Emily Bean, another captain, Diana Campanella, Victoria Campanella, Carley Potter, Annika Crawford, another captain, Lexi Seigun, Brooke Dietz, Lindsay Cludd, Taylor Habers, Yapi Minawatt, Emily Lobo, Natalie Lyja, J.A. Rosenbaum, Julia Schwartz, Amanda Stout, Desi Walker, Alexandria Williams, Jessica Whitby, Katie Dunn, and Kami Zager.
At this time, I'd like to introduce Mia Kovac to introduce our teamness.
A little bit about the season, we finished fourth in one regular season in the MSC, we placed second at the conference tournament, and we qualified out of regionals, two sectionals as a team, which is the first time since I've been coaching that we've accomplished that. And we sent two girls down to state. One, our first, Katie Gre, great in the vault. Katie placed 22nd overall in the vaults. And our second qualifier was Teagan, Teagan Elbert, and she's not here, she placed seventh overall in floor, and 24th on, oh, sorry, all around, sorry, 22nd all around and seventh on floor. So that was, she made it to finals, so that was a huge accomplishment.
Just so you know, Teagan is actually busy right now playing a soccer game at Warren High School, so she was unable to be here tonight. Now I'd like to introduce our head wrestling coach, Jake Jokes.
The rest of the team, we finished the season 17-3 this year. We had an outstanding season, we took third in the conference, we took third in the regional. We had eight guys play small conference honors this year, we had two regional champions, Grant Dan and Sergio Sosa. They were also conference champions as well, and then they also made it out of state this year. Some of our other accomplishments that we had this year, beat Middletown, and we only beat them four times in the last 20 years, so that was a good accomplishment for our program. Come on now, guys. This is Grant Dan and Sergio Sosa.
At this time, I'd like to introduce Assistant Speech Coach, Debbie Terry.
Hi, good evening. Those of you that aren't familiar with speech, if you've ever been here, if you were having a tournament, or you've ever gone to watch a tournament, there's a lot of people talking to walls, and they're supposed to, there's nothing wrong with that, but we have always had a very, very successful team, and here's the reason that I've been coaching for five or six years, and even prior to that. We are a powerhouse in Illinois, we are very well-known, there aren't that many speech teams up here in the north, so we compete a lot in Southern, Southern. We often take our plus-plus rights to get to where we need to go, so we can talk to walls and talk to rooms. So, we have a lot of students who really are speech group. So, some of those today, one of them that's here is Megan Conklin, so she is not a student yet. Maggie, one of our three individuals in two events who made it to state this year. She does humor centriplication, which is basically, you tape a script, and you play all of the characters. So, some people play anywhere from three to six different characters in a minute, little one-out play. So, she does that fantastic, she is awesome, she does that. She missed final round at state, had one point, and everyone in final round gave them that, so we like to say she's the top state female competitor. Julie and Jerry, they are our two largest duet acting duo, and they are a dino duo. This is their second year, come back to back, second place, places at state. Their piece, which hopefully you will see on Friday during our assembly, but it's basically a married couple going into counseling, that really is going in for counseling due to a big misunderstanding, so it's been pretty funny, but we did an awesome job, and the nice thing for the three of them are all juniors, so we're expecting a lot from them next year.
Now I'd like to introduce our head doublets coach, Sarah Steppack.
I'd like to also introduce my assistant coach, Erica Bruce, who volunteered her time this year to get us down to state. This year, if you would have told me in December we were going to state, I think the team and I wouldn't have believed it, we had a rocky start. It wasn't until middle of January that we really started getting through and being more successful. At sectionals, we placed fifth, which qualified us for the state competition. Three teams qualified for state, 10 qualified for the second day. So on the first day, we took fifth, which qualified us for the second day, and we ended up taking fifth in state, and kind of like, I don't know, we like to say we're still the top hip-hop team in the state, so the first hip-hop team, but a fifth place finish, we would have never guessed it would be here, so, good accomplishment for the girls at that fall, I'm sure. Sophomore, Kira Onerd. Junior Polly Cook. Junior Amelie Leclair. Junior Becca Nappin. Junior Courtney McCollie. Senior and captain, Stephanie Cap. Senior Anna Wall. Senior and captain, Jessica Bax. Sophomore, Sammy Sax. Senior and captain, Manny Tor. Senior Lauren Garra. Senior Amanda Wolf. Assistant Julia West.
Before we end this, kind of a bittersweet moment for me, 12 years ago about this time, I hired Sarah, our head coach for the doublet program. She took over a program that I'd had four coaches in four years. She took over a program that was in disarray, probably the nicest term I could use. Sarah stepped in and took over the program and did it her way, with high expectations for the girls, and high expectations for herself. In a few short years, we won the state championship in IDTA, or it became IHSA, and the number one in state in hip-hop. She continued to push hip-hop, IHSA took over, IHSA, everybody was together. Sarah didn't bad-nile us, we stayed in the hip-hop, and the first year that IHSA had state competition, we finished third in state. Probably already I could guess the best hip-hop team in state that year, the two other schools that beat us did not perform that. As Sarah mentioned, this year, in the middle of the year, when we started talking about transportation needs for state, she said, "Let's book it, but I don't know, we're young." And much like Sarah, how she coaches and what she does, we got better, each day, each week, and led us down state, where we finished fifth place, getting better each day, it was an outstanding performance. Today marks Sarah's probably last official duty as her head coach. And I guess, we got the assembly, I guess we do have a few assembly tests, not really but public recognition, let's go that route. Sarah has changed this program to when people think of Warren fans, we are considered one of the best in the state, and it's because of Sarah who expected the best out of our girls, and expected the best out of herself to bring to the girls, and we are in that stature today. Sarah, in front of everybody, I want to thank you very much for your job, well done, and you're gonna stay on your round, but I think you'll be around a little bit in unofficial to that season, so thank you.
Folks, you're welcome, welcome to join us for the rest of our board meeting this evening, we're gonna be in the gallery. Another of that awesome winner, and congratulations to all of you, and have a great evening, the family sent so much to come in, a round of applause.
Are we ready? Jake?
Uh, almost.
No worries.
Okay.
Shoots a tornado, so don't worry. Storm's coming.
I'm ready.
Start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. I don't have any changes, does anybody else have any changes?
I do not.
Then I move, we approve the agenda as presented.
Sorry.
Roll call.
Motion by Anderson, second by Mundt.
Correct.
Ms. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Walz?
Yes.
Mr. Mundt?
Yes.
And Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
I have four yeses, I'm curious.
All right, thank you. The next item on our agenda this evening is our reception of visitors. This is the point where if anyone would like to address the board, it is their opportunity to come forward and do so. Okay? We have no visitors wishing to address the board, we'll move on to the president's report. And, under the president's report, we have our committee reports, which is the Architectural Services Review Committee that met February 23rd. And we, we're doing a review on architectural services, so we requested proposals or information from... from several different companies. We received, I believe, 10 or 11? 11? 10? 7?
13.
13, there you go.
There's a lot.
It was in there. It's kind of like football, you know, touchdown or so. But then we had a meeting, which we discussed the various, not really proposals, but their statement of services and what they do and what their experiences and so on. So since, and we went through that and we had, we narrowed it down to five and we were scheduled to have a meeting on
April 1st.
April 1st to have a direct interview with those five firms to
That's a big process, right?
That's all day. And so it'll be from nine to three or eight to three or whatever it was. So that's an ongoing process, so we're, that's good and we're glad that's going. So we'll continue to work on that. Other ones, we had a safety committee meeting on March 1st, which I was not at.
I was. Good meeting, good turnout. Talked a lot about safety review of our flip charts. Tina was there from transportation, talking about some things that were going out because of our transportation hub now and how we're going to get that information, kind of condense it, because we know we're really in an emergency. We really want to get to the main points of what's happening in a safe procedure and protocol. But we thought it'd be a good thing to update those, the bus drivers, the aides and so forth with any type of special needs transportation, make sure we're all on the same page. Transportation facility, relocation plans were talked about. We had representation there from most of the city, or excuse me, from the village, fire department, police department, first responders. So they were instrumental in reviewing some of our plans, evacuation and safety tips. There was some conversation going back and forth about, is it Alice? Correct? Some different approaches now that are being taken, you know, research based kind of stuff on what's really the best thing to do in an emergency situation. You know, is there a right time to lock down? Is there a time really to go up and get out of the building, get out of the hallway? So there were a lot of conversation that transitioned around what to do in an emergency situation. One of the, probably the bigger things that came up were the district having a rough time getting maps for the transition site out at Gurnee Mills. They seem to be a little bit reluctant about providing the district with exits and doors and parameters that I think our maintenance group are going to work on with contacting Gurnee Mills to do a better job. It's changed ownership in hands and I think some of the blueprints and architectural pieces got locked away and some seats are lost somewhere. But I think those are really good things to bring out for first responders to be out there, because we do have students that are out there at Gurnee Mills location in our transition program. There were a couple of recommendations, again, that we had mentioned about lockdowns. Really had, and probably can have some more conversation about what is appropriate to go into our soft lockdowns versus our hard lockdowns. And then there was some conversation about adding a third term about, and the conversation really came up is that if there's something going on at one campus, what kind of effect does it have here at this campus? And we know today with phones and social medias, you may have families that have a sibling in one building and another one over here, and they're starting to talk, well, why aren't we doing what they're doing over there? And how come you're being released and you're being locked down? So there was a lot of conversation that involved around, you know, what do we do when things are happening out in the community? Companies, maybe a year ago or so, we had a hostage situation, family domestic violence, there was a weapon involved. One campus went into lockdown, this one did not. So there was some conversation, you know, what do we do? And really the emphasis that came out of, I guess the focus that came out of that was how do we communicate to the community what's going on in different locations and why those steps are being taken? So, but overall, very productive meeting. And I conclude my report on safety.
Okay. Thank you very much. That's the end of the president's report, so and the committee, so.
Before you move on, can I just share one thing to the board and the community and it's agenda related? This weekend was the regional competition for the Illinois Science Olympia and our Warren team competed in that. It was held at the College of Lake County and their goal was to make it to state. And they didn't make it to state. It's the top four teams. Our team came in fifth, but they missed by two points. They did a fabulous job and I just wanted to recognize them for their efforts because they really, really wanted to make it to state this year. They were two points away, so we're expecting them to go next year.
Great, yeah, that's good, that's good work anyway, so. Fantastic, thank you.
On the superintendent's report for the board, we've concluded our normal monthly reports for the month of February and I think we also have a treasurer's report.
Yes, we've concluded the treasurer's report for February, so we finally caught up. Eighty months are complete throughout the year. We are trending better on the revenue side and trending better on the expenditure side. I did want to make just a quick note that we did receive our co-seeds from the borrowing for to go to the Iron River Field that we paid. So that's it, unless the board has any questions.
So you're saying we got the money back that we already paid them for?
That's correct.
By borrowing on the bonds we did last time?
That's correct.
Right. So we're all done with that transaction?
Yes.
We're all done, so. That's the one saving us about $500,000 a year, as I recall?
Absolutely.
Great. Okay, that's it for me.
You others just did, if you will be, we had no voicings in the past month, but we did, I checked in, Mr. Walsh, it was a great idea, I reached out to the foundation schools of just about what they need. They put me in contact with their community outreach person. So she said there are some things, I have an email with her, still trying to track down some things, but they definitely, this and the water is not the issue at the school. Right? But they did say
The water is not the issue.
Right, they did say there are some other needs, trying to track them down. A centennial committee of work has been coming along great, so we've had great participation in our monthly, now going to bi-monthly meetings, I guess semi-monthly meetings, right? So we're going to start, it's being a little bit early because our due date, right, is May, in terms of when we are supposed to have a tentative plan for our meetings. So we're excited about that. We think there's some great programming that's going to come out of it, as well as starting with Gurnee Days, just celebrating our 100 years. We've had great participation and alumni from the classes of way back join us to bring some memories and some pictures and that's been very much fun to work with some of our older alumni groups. I wanted to also let the board know that I did two other items. One is the North Chicago discussion continues, so in all of those districts in North Chicago, as well as the districts that are adjacent to North Chicago, the topic about their charter, their potential charter growth, it is with the state charter commission now. So pending the outcome of that, there still may be a need for us to reach out to them to let them know that generally speaking, we support the local school districts, including North Chicago. So they were just wanting us to communicate to our boards at some point in time, they might be requesting a letter of support from each of the local boards in regards to the position of our local school districts. Not necessarily anything about charters themselves, just, you know, obviously North Chicago's in a bind because with the size of their district, what's going to the charters is pretty devastating for them. And then the other piece was, last week, quarterly, I had the fortune of meeting with state superintendent Tony Smith and I communicated to our administrators today. One of the reasons I do that is for the Lake County superintendent's group, but it also lets me kind of get a feel early on for some things that are going out. So some things that we talked about now, the SAT piece is moving forward, not for this year, because it's just too late in the game, but they fully expect to be funding the SAT for all high schools next year. Willie and I had some good conversations about what that means and our transition from ACT to SAT and how that, how and when that happens. But they do have some really neat tools, support areas for kids that are really good stuff. So the college board is pretty thorough in their work usually, and so they actually have some really good stuff that they're excited to share with the Illinois districts. We talked about money, what PEAR is going to continue for now, if you've heard about some other states, the student growth piece being embedded into our teacher evaluation system starts for us in 1617. We prepared for it, our PEAR committee has done wonderful work, our staff is ready for it, we have a good plan. But because the feds pulled out, you know, in terms of the reauthorization, it's not necessarily a mandate from the feds anymore, some states have started rethinking what their commitment is to PEAR going forward. Word from Illinois is we at this point in time, as we put in such good work in time, focus on this, we're moving forward at this point in time going into next school year. It was important to hear that commitment from them and so we'll continue to move that forward and keeping, keeping an ear and an eye on that, just as we do start to, as districts do start to implement. And then the last piece was just money. As always, it's just, you know, there's a conversation about money down in Springfield and it's not going anywhere as the stalemate gets closer to the end of this year and we've already stopped talking about FY16 and as Carol's mentioned several times, we're now stopped talking about FY17 and hoping to get a budget passed that and hoping to get state allocations for that. The longer this goes on, there are a lot of states, a lot of districts across the state who will start having that conversation about what does that mean if we don't get state funding next year and will we even be able to open? So it sounds scary, but on their end, they know that if, like, we get a significant amount of our money, obviously locally. So for us, it's secondary sources of revenue for, right? But for other districts, this is what they're counting on to open and it is a little scary the more this political arm wrestling match goes on down state. It's scarier in other parts of the state for sure. And that was the end of the superintendent's report.
All right, into Dr. Ogilvy. We'll move on to new business. The first item under new business is the security services.
On February 5th, the district received or invited companies to bid on security services beginning July 1, 2016. The bid was publicly opened on February 19th at 1:30 PM. We received three sealed bids at the four services. We've included a copy of the bid specifications for you in the bid log. The lowest responsible bidder was Howe Security and we have had Howe at the district for about five years now. They have done an outstanding job and we're very pleased to recommend them. We have three representatives here from Howe, Bill Howe, Matt Jayzies and Hector Barrera, who all participate in supervising and staffing. They are out of Lake Bluff and which makes it very nice for us for substitutes. So the administration is recommending that the bid for security services be awarded to Howe and we have that up to a five-year bid. A five-year award.
I just would like to say that they do provide outstanding services above and beyond our expectation. I'd like to share my experience as a parent. My son, his sophomore year, was on crutches almost the entire year and could not carry or lift anything. And he physically got around that building because of Howe Security. They got him from class to class, they carried his backpack. They, and they do that with all of the students that are in a wheelchair, on crutches, have, you know, difficulty physically getting around. And parents and students are very appreciative of the care that you give in a very loving way to these students. And Hector, I know you know that I appreciate you guys, but that's not really, I don't think what we expect from them, but that's what they give. And they're very friendly, parent pickup, they're, you know, waving at the parents and they recognize people and they are doing an outstanding job.
Thank you.
Well, that's good news. You sure they're not waving when you get out of here? No, I'm just kidding. You know, I'm kidding. Yeah, I hear good things all the time too, so. So then I move to approve the security services bid and award Howe Security Inc. beginning July 1, 2016.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Anderson, second by Campbell. Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Mundah?
Yes.
Ms. Campbell?
Absolutely yes.
And Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
I have four yes, motion carries.
Can have everything. Okay, we'll move right along to the IHSA membership renewal, which is an every year thing. We have to do every year to say we want to join, even though, I don't know where else we'd go, but we're going to join anyway.
We're independent.
Yeah.
Sure.
You can wait two years on that.
In motion.
I'll move to approve membership renewal to the Illinois High School Association for the 2016-17 school year.
Mr. Walsh, second at that.
Motion by Mundah, second by Walsh.
Roll call.
Ms. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Mundah?
Yes.
And Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Four yes, motion carries.
So the next item on the agenda is the approval of the resolution authorizing issuance of a notice of remedial warning to a tenured teacher. So I'll make the motion, so I move to approve the resolution authorizing issuance of a notice of remedial warning to Dan Codley.
Second.
Are there any questions? Roll call.
Ms. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Mundah?
Yes.
And Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Thank you. The next item is the approval of non-employment of long-term substitutes for fiscal year 17 school year.
As a reminder to board members, it's an annual process in March, just that we release our long-term subs, some will be rehired for us next year, others may not, but we need to release them to give them, do notice that we aren't guaranteeing them a full-time position next year.
Do we have to name them?
Yes. Do we have the motion?
In the post.
Oh, they're prior.
Okay, so as posted.
It says as posted, right? Okay, so we need a motion.
I'll move to approve non-reemployment of listed long-term substitutes for the fiscal year 17 school year as posted.
Second. Roll call.
Motion by Mundah, second by Anderson. Ms. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Mundah?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
I have four yes, motion carries.
Next item is the approval of the hiring recommendations per Exhibit A. So I move to approve Exhibit A hiring recommendations 212 through 225 as posted.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Anderson, second by Mundah. Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Mundah?
Yes.
And Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Four yes, motion carries.
Next item is the approval of the payment of the bills for 315. So are there any questions? Do we need a motion?
I'll move to approve the payment of bills for 315, 2016, the amount of $3,985,687.97.
Roll call.
Motion by Mundah, second by Walsh. Ms. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Mundah?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Four yes, motion carries.
Next item is the approval of the regular meeting minutes and executive session minutes of February 23rd, 2016. So I move to approve the regular meeting minutes and executive session minutes of February 23rd, 2016.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Anderson, second by Campbell. Mr. Mundah?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Four yes, motion carries.
Let's see. All right, next item on the agenda is the special meeting minutes, executive session minutes of March 1st.
I'll move to approve the special meeting minutes and executive session minutes of March 1st, 2016.
Second.
Motion by Mundah, second by Campbell. Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Mundah?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
I abstained, I was not at the meeting.
I have three yes, one abstention, motion carries.
That is the last item on the agenda, so if there's no questions, comments, or what have you, I move adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Anderson, second by Mundah. Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Mundah?
Yes.
And Mr. Anderson.
Yes.
I have four yeses. Motion carries.
Thank you, everybody.